Good morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, November 5th, 2025. Regular session of the NAGS Headboard of Commissioners is hereby called to order. Before we begin our business, I'd like to recognize former Mayor Bob Moller, who's with us today. Welcome, Mayor. If you will, please join me in a few moments of silence. Now if you'll please stand as you're able to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to the adoption of the agenda with which there will be some modifications.
Mayor, I'd like to make a change to the recognition schedule. I would like to move the presentations right after the new employee and the 20-year and the Earl Murray Junior Employee of the Year presentation after that. Just flip off the bottom to the top.
All right, very good. So we will do the new employee, we will do the two presentations, and then we will do the 20-year and the Earl Murray Employee of the Year. With that, is there a second to that motion? I have a motion and a second. Oh, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry. So that brings us to our recognitions then, and we will start with a new employee in Amy.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Please welcome Stephen Penaro. He's our new Deputy Finance Director. He has over 20 years of experience in accounting and finance, which aligns his expertise with the skill set needed for this position. He has worked in both the public and the private sector. Most recently, his position was in senior leadership at the West Virginia Board of Risk as CFO, and in that, he is very familiar with GAASB, preparing all aspects of the ACFER, financial statements, which he's actually currently working on. Needless to say, he was able to jump right in and start working. He has experience with multi-fund budgeting, budget oversight, process redesign, team development, strategic collaboration. He's a CPA. When we interviewed with Stephen, we talked a lot about our town culture and values, and both sides, we both felt like we would be a great fit for each other. He was even recognized at his previous position for Employee of the Month out of a large pool of many people for his positive attitude. We feel very fortunate with the timing of his job, this job posting, that it fit into the right timeframe for he and his wife Angela, who is also CPA. She has a CPA firm. They had bought a house in Nagshead a few years ago and decided it was the right time to move here with their two dogs. And even after less than two weeks, I really have a good feeling about working and collaborating with Stephen as a partner. I just think it was all meant to be. I'm really confident he will make valuable and impactful contributions to the town. We're excited to use his expertise and continue to uphold the high standards we hold ourselves accountable to. He's used to juggling a lot of demands. I really can't say enough good things about him. We're lucky to have him. I know he is excited about being able to contribute and give back to the community that he lives in full-time now. So welcome to Nagshead, Stephen.
Thank you.
And that will bring us now to our presentations, and we will have the Nagshead Woods Annual Report.
I'm sure it's the mouse that's the clicker. All right, thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Town Nagshead staff and residents. Appreciate it. My name's Aaron McColl. I'm the Northeast Regional Stewart for the Nature Conservancy, and I'm going to give the 2025 Annual Report for Nagshead Woods Preserve. At any point, you guys know, ask any questions. I'll kind of go through this. You should have a lot of this that was sent to you in your annual report, and I'll just try to cover over it, and hopefully there'll be some nice pictures for y'all to look at. All right, so just kind of going over the staff. Laura Edgar, Conservation Store, there's myself. Eric is our Restoration Specialist with Carbon and Pete Restoration. Aaron Bunch is a new employee for us. He's actually out of Edington, but he's doing all of our coastal restoration, looking at fish, oysters, SAV, and coastal work like that within this area. And then a lot of you know Kevin Zork. He's our part-time Preserve Stewart to help with a lot of stewardship around Nagshead Woods as our staff is being spread throughout the Northeast Region. So it's great having him onboard and helping out around the woods, part-time. As you know, 90% of our annual funding is privately funded from TNC in North Carolina. We really appreciate what the Town Nagshead and Kill Devil Hills do to help with our operations around the woods and things of that nature. We also get stuff from Outer Banks Meeting Foundation. We've gotten stuff from Dominion Energy, Outer Banks Fear, but so we appreciate all those grants and funding that help us deal with improvements and visitation from stewardship on trails to helping with biological and management within the preserve. Trails and infrastructure. So just to kind of review, we've got eight miles of hiking trails, you know, five wooden bridges, boardwalks, benches. We've got ADA capacity of a thousand-foot linear thing in the concrete, and we've got 62 signs that includes an audio tour in English and Spanish. We also have multiple buildings that we take care of. We have our Pavilion Building that will talk a little bit more about updating, getting more modern, to our office facility, and we also have a Preserve House that helps us have interns in the summer that helps us facilitate in having students out here to help with projects from visitor stuff all the way out to research and education. So we've been trying to update our new signage around the preserve, trying to give it a holistic approach, making everything more modern, making it connect better and things like that. Most recently, we've updated our trail map and things up there at the visiting center. We redid the Y sign and things like that to do that. We've redone our logos at our buildings to just give people more information, and all of our trailheads around are very similar-looking and matching now so that people can think. We're looking at updating some of our trail signs within the woods, doing something on the town trail in next year, and then updating the one over there at the town park in the next year and the next budget. So things to come. As I mentioned, the ADA trail, that's been a big one for us. It's a lot of boardwalk and a lot of concrete, and so this past year, we really invested a lot of time and energy and money into redoing it, making sure that it stayed adequate for ADA use for wheelchairs and things like that. So that trail was built in 2011, so now it's been over 15 years. So we've had to redo all the boardwalk and all those handrails, and so we've gotten to that point. The reason we had this angle shown is a couple, during some of our storms, we've had actually that boardwalk lift up in places like that, so we've had to bring it down and get the level, and we've had to grind out the concrete, just get the bumps and things like that out. So try to keep this trail. It's definitely a heavy-use trail from handicapped susceptible to people with strollers, to people that maybe want to walk in the woods but don't feel as much comfortable maybe out in the wild, so to speak. And within that, we've had a lot of volunteers. App State helped us do 1,000 linear feet with, you know, around that stuff, bringing in boards. They also helped us redo that bridge. We've been out to the Roanoke Trail. We redecked that whole bridge and things like that, and redid the benches. So App State was here for a week, and those young ladies really helped us move a lot of boards and screw down a lot of boards, so it's good to have volunteer help and things like that. Trails and visitors. So this kind of just breaks down the usage of our woods, and you've seen that we're getting, on average, you know, 700 to 1,000 hikers a month on these, on the different trails. We also, these are all by laser counter, by the way, and then we've been having them since 2020, so we're kind of getting, really getting some data now. We also have a laser counter that strictly is set up for vehicle use right there in Ocean Acres, and so you're seeing 2,800 vehicles per month coming through there. And then this is just shows you the numbers with our audio tour. You know, 1,300 have used the audio tour, and then 25 have used it in the Spanish version. This kind of breaks down your five-year trends. So you're looking at, you know, over 60,000 visitors have come through our counters. This kind of breaks down our busiest time. We definitely see it increase in that, in the woods. You know, sometime around 11:00, we are full till about midday, and then it kind of quiets out. But definitely, we have definitely seen our parking lot fill up and stay full in that midday timeframe. And then you can see here, March to June, we're around 1,000 hikers on the trails during this time. And the Town, Blueberry Ridge Trails and some of these ones that are a little further off are a little bit lower numbers, but still, we're averaging 800 hikers on that per month. And then, as you see, 2020, we had probably our highest use, dropped off a bit, but still, all in all, we're still seeing quite a bit of hikers back in there, around 10,000 and stuff like that. So it's being used. This does not include people hiking the wood, hiking through the road, or using the gravel road for bicycle or any type of use like that, which is another use that we're just not really recording. This kind of just goes over what I was talking about with interns, career development, and volunteers and stuff like that. All in all, we had, you know, just under 800 hours of volunteer hours this past year in Nagshead Woods, from some of our volunteers that are locally here to having students and stuff work with us. The past, both spring and fall, we've been working with Coastal Studies Institute. Both in their spring semester and fall semester, we'll have an intern that'll be in the woods working on our project at least one day a week. They could be helping with stewardship stuff, or they could be helping with developing educational-type information for us and things like that. We've also had students work on GIS stuff and working on our fire maps and things of that nature. So we kind of work with CSI and the students and either the talents or the skills that they're looking at to improve upon, and/or we kind of have set projects where some students, they just want to be outside, and they want to learn about managing a property, and they do invasive work for us. This year, we have a guy that's helping us do a lot of invasive work, pulling Russian olive and species like that in this time thing. We've been updating all of our staff on first aid training response. Like I said, we've had App State out here working on projects, and, you know, a group of different people just all together is coming out and helping us and, you know, putting a hand into the effort to keep that preserve open, keeping it safe and things of that nature. Education. So we had a fifth-grade class the past couple of years, and this past year, we had 190 fifth graders come in. They do the seed to sign, seed to sound trail thing. We work with the aquarium to do this. We use some of our education endowment to help pay for that so that these fifth-grade students can use that, or we use town funding in order so that we can have the fifth-grade class come out and participate in this. And this is where they kind of learn the ecology and the geology of the barrier islands, and they work from the Doughty Street Park thing all the way across through the town trail and things like that. We work with the Aquarium Cans. We had the Friends of Mountains to Sea Trail. They were down here this past spring, and they had an event, and we had all the hikers come in through the woods and use the woods and learn about the woods and stuff like that. And then we had our open house, and we did also, we did guided tours this summer and stuff like that. So we've had a total of 440 individuals reach out in the last year, participate in these activities. This is just into our conservation management, you know, biology part. As always, to manage Nagshead Woods, keeping up with invasive plants and animals is always a priority to us. Russian olive, microstegium, nutria is a species of animals that we have to deal with that can degrade our marshes and things like that if we don't keep them in check. So these are just some of the things that we're constantly working on and are seasonal things that we have to keep an eye on. As always, we have a bow hunting program. We have 45 participants in the thing. We've harvested four deers as of last year. We have 42 registered hunters for this year, and so that season is on its way. The season will end January 1st for the regular season, and then we do have an extended season that starts January 11th and goes February 16th. This is, we're working with CSI this year, their fall semester and stuff, and one of the things that they'll be doing is they're actually doing some vegetation monitoring in Nagshead Woods, and they're also doing interviews with people that are using the woods and things like that. So they'll be presenting their finding on December 11th, at 3:00 PM over there at CSI, if anyone's interested, and maybe some of you in the audience have participated in interviews. But this is something we're working with CSI just to learn more about the woods and our users and things like that. And these are some management challenges and things that we're dealing with. You know, some of these may actually be similar to what towns are dealing with. For us, bikes and e-bikes on the trails is becoming more and more of a problem that we're having to deal with. You know, and I think it's just, there's more of a user in that nature and some of that thing. We're trying to sign it and just get the word out that, you know, our trails are for footpaths only and things like that. But, you know, all in all, it's still a small percentage of these things that come up, but these are just the stuff that we deal with. Emergencies on Old Nagshead Woods Road and stuff like that. We had a couple of incidents this past summer with vehicles and stuff like that. And then, you know, the dumping of people's yard debris and/or white trash, you know, whatever they have, you know, their refrigerators and things like that that show up in the woods. All in all, this is a small percentage of what we deal with. You know, I would say 98% of the people that use the woods, respect the woods, and follow rules, but these are kind of the three big things that kind of pop up for us. And so we're right now in the middle of refreshing our Pavilion or Education Center and our exhibit to make it more modern, to have that building open to the public so that they can learn about the woods, you know, and in the summertime, they can come in there where it's AC and cool down, and also still get an idea of why the woods are important and things like that. We've gotten some funding. We've gotten some private grants to help do this stuff and facilitate this thing. So one of the things we're going to have is a 3D model. If any of you have spent any time in Nagshead Woods, one of the things that makes Nagshead Woods special is the topography that goes through that. So we'll actually have, and you can kind of see a display down there, there will be this map model that people will be able to look over, and you'll be able to see the trails and the topography and how the woods comes up and how the vegetation changes in the topography area. So that's a neat thing that we're looking at having out there, that we can talk about the woods. And we're also going to have a touchscreen TV that people can go in there, and we'll be able to run things that will talk about maybe Nagshead Woods that may talk about, you know, some of the things about the nature conservative. We'll have topics like prescribed fire species and things like that. So we're hoping to have that so that people can come in there and learn stuff, and we can update it and stuff, where it's just not the same stagnant thing that you produce once and then it's there. So we'll be able to work on that. And we're opening, having more displays and things like that, and we'll have other just stagnant signs that talk specifically about the woods and stuff like that. So we're hoping to have all of this up and running come, you know, sometime around spring and early summer. And we just, you know, really appreciate both the towns of Nagshead and Kill Devil Hills working on getting conservation easements on these two big tracts of land. I don't, I mean, when you look at those maps and you look at that tan species, tan spot with the Nagshead, and you look at those red spots, and by getting these in conservation easement, and now you include all the green that we have, I mean, we have basically secured Nagshead Woods. So that's an amazing accomplishment, you know, for all the towns, for the communities to support this, you know, from dune to dune, from Jockeys Ridge south to Run Hill, you know, we have 1,000, over 1,200 in protection, perpetuity. We can all get to use Nagshead Woods forever, generations. That's an amazing accomplishment. And, I mean, that's, and we'll have all this to use, and we have hunting and hiking and this place protected, research and all this stuff to go on without any threats. That's amazing. So great. Appreciate y'all's support in getting that done. Thank you. This is a picture of bobcats that one of our visitors that comes every day. That is a mom and her little kite this year, and they are just, they're using the boardwalk a mom and her little kite this year, and they are just, they're using the boardwalk as well. So thank you all. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. If not, please come by and enjoy the woods.
Erin, let me, let me see if anybody has any questions before you go. Great report, thank you. Glad to hear that you're dealing with the e-bike issue, and that potential damage to the trails. Do we have any questions for?
No questions. Just thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
No, but I think the easement speaks volumes to what a good job you guys are doing back there, and all the new programs look really exciting, so happy for you and appreciate your work.
Great. All right, thank you, Erin. That brings us next to our OSHA Safety and Health Achievement Recognition Program, and Deputy Chief Hyde.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to take just a brief moment to talk to you about our ongoing safety program. Each year, our employees and our safety committee work pretty hard to look at what we're doing, look at our policies, try to make things better, and keep our employees safe. Shows a strong dedication to a safety culture within the town. Part of this process means that we invite the North Carolina Department of Labor in each year to basically do site inspections and look at all of our programs, look at our injury rates, and just help us out a little bit on making things safer and making a better workplace. Over this past year, and just recently, we were, received notification that we were in receipt of some awards from our most recent inspection, but it's not just the most recent inspection, it's for, you know, ongoing work for several years for several of the departments. So I'd like to just take this time just to introduce Mr. Kevin Obar, Consultative Services Bureau Chief from the North Carolina Department of Labor, to tell you a little bit about the program, and to make some presentations of some awards for us. Kev?
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me and allowing me this time. As you said, my name's Kevin Obar, and I get the honor of managing a group at Department of Labor that provides free safety and health services to small businesses and high-hazard employers all across the whole state. It's available for, for public sector and for private sector, and for the employers that like to go a little above and beyond, we have a recognition program, Safety and Health Achievement Recognition Program. And the town of Nagshead has reached that milestone and has received that award. Now, there's about 515 municipalities in North Carolina. There are only 10 municipalities that currently hold this award, so you should be very proud of the staff and the town. Those 10 municipalities have 22 departments, so like, in this case, we'll have the Public Works Administration and a couple of fire departments, and just congratulations.
Yeah, so Chief, Deputy Chief Hyde, if you want to recognize any people, but we are going to do the pictures as a, as a group up here just a little bit later, if you would.
You want to just call the department heads up real quick and give them a plaque?
Yes, sir, let's do that, if you would.
So our first award is Public Services Administration. So this will encompass our new facility for recycling and administration building and all the work that takes place there. So. I'll do one of these, but, so both fire stations also receive the award. But Chief, if you want.
Thank you. That brings us next to the recognition of a 20-year employee, Andy.
Kelly, to the podium, please. I promised Kelly that I would make this sort of a roast, but I decided not to do that, to keep it serious today. But, yeah, I'm honored today to celebrate Kelly Wyatt's 20 years of service with the town of Nagshead. Kelly started with the town on October 10th, 2005. She initially started as a zoning administrator, but over the years has served as Deputy Planning Director and currently Planning Director. She's done almost everything in the planning department during her tenure. Writing zoning permits, reviewing residential and commercial site plans, conducting inspections, initiating and dealing with numerous code enforcement issues, which are all very fun, writing zoning text and map amendments, working on special projects and town planning studies, including the comprehensive plan, the master plan for Doughty Park, Parks and Recreation Plan, Hazard Mitigation Plan, just to name a few. Kelly is, as everyone knows, a very community-minded individual. She was instrumental in the development of Doughty Park, including the programming of the park. She helped create what is now the Arts and Culture Committee, and has since helped to plan for our annual events, including budgeting and assigning resources to those efforts. She has also been instrumental in sustaining the town's Todd D. Kraft Septic Health Initiative, seeing through the last update to the decentralized wastewater management plan, and is now working with the Septic Health Advisory Committee to implement recommendations from the plan. She is currently working to launch a 0% interest loan program for the septic repairs using grant funding from the state. Kelly certainly understands coastal issues. She's a cam permitting officer, and has written too many flood permits to count. Kelly's job is not easy. Kelly and I were speaking about this the other day. When you have to make a recommendation on a project or a policy to abort into the community, there's often no right or wrong answer. Planning can be very subjective. Planners live in the gray. It takes an understanding of the community and its vision, and often being able to read between the lines of what the community is after. In many instances, you know, going into an issue, for every one person you make happy, there's going to be another person, you don't. So that is just the nature of things with planning. But being able to consistently uphold the town's values and culture is something that's not easy to do. I think Kelly's good at this. She is intuitive and value-driven. Her passion and strength of character is what sees her through this. A great example of this was the C5 rezoning initiative the board completed a few years ago. Rezoning several hundred properties is a challenging task, to say the least. This was only accomplished through persistence and a willingness to continue to engage and listen to the community over several months to understand what would accomplish the town's goals, but also be acceptable to property owners and residents. Kelly's a compassionate leader. She's involved in a lot of volunteering activities. Some folks don't know this, she's involved with Meals on Wheels, and SPCA, and other charitable things. She cares about her employees deeply. She looks out for them. She's touched the community in too many ways to count. If you live here and enjoy the atmosphere of our town, the amenities and the services we provide, in many ways, Kelly has contributed to that. So we appreciate everything you do.
Our next item on the agenda is the presentation of the nominees for the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year. These will be presented by the department heads. I don't know if they have rehearsed the order in which they're planning to do this, or if I should call on them. So let's start with administration.
She's used to being behind the scenes, but today, she's in the spotlight. Good afternoon, or good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having me back. So the nominee, well, first of all, I'd like to congratulate all our well-deserving nominees. However, I would like to advocate for the Employee of the Year Representative for Admin Services and Town Manager's Office, Karen Snyder. She's been with the town for close to five years now. She is our IT administrator, responsible for coordinating technology with our IT vendors internally and managing the town's systems. We've been able to leverage our external IT vendor as a help desk and hardware implementer, and so we've been really able to utilize Karen as more of an internal IT project manager, utilizing technology to bring greater efficiency and collaboration to our employees and to our customers. Over the past year, Karen has assisted with implementing the Town Clerk Agenda Management software. She's launched the chatbot on our website. She's coordinated digitizing building plans, used GIS immunists to put our tax bills on the website. We also have building permits on the website. She's helped us implement our resident and utilities access online payment system. She continues to be a catalyst in getting the town on SharePoint, which allows, really for collaboration among team members. It serves as an internal communication device for information between departments. Right now, she's working on something, she's kind of paving something new for us in developing policies for using AI, which is a big theme right now. She obviously ensures that our IT infrastructure is secure. She's worked with the League of Municipalities to give us free subscription to our Arctic Wolf, providing cybersecurity solutions to the town, which otherwise would be very expensive. And, you know, when one project ends, we inevitably have several more lined up. We're in the middle of updating our internal and public-facing GIS right now. We're looking at fiber build-outs to eliminate some of our individual internet bills that we have at our bathhouses and parks. She's working on a cybersecurity grant for us right now, so obviously never-ending to-do list, which is kind of in line with our town values. Excellence requires innovation and curiosity. Our town values are an expectation in the way all our team members show up every day, so it's a baseline that Karen personifies these. But I think this award really demonstrates those that go beyond the everyday standards we hold ourselves accountable to. And, you know, when it comes to technology, usually government is not known for being ahead of the curve, but thankfully, Karen doesn't operate with that mindset. This past year, we kind of came to a point where our servers would be out of warranty, so it was really a catalyst for a larger discussion about, like, where our IT infrastructure was headed in the future. And Karen analyzed the options, and we decided that we're going to completely, we're not going to have servers anymore. We're going with cloud-based storage for all our data and software systems, and she's in the process of that implementation. Karen's attitude, she's everybody's go-to person in the town. We're lucky to have her in Admin Services. She's super approachable, everyone feels comfortable asking her for help. She has a very calm demeanor, nothing seems to frazzle her. She's patient with everyone, she can solve complex technical problems, and she also assists people that aren't comfortable using technology. And this is really empowering to our team members, you know, when they can embrace technology and learn something new. Saying this, she operates with a sense of urgency, because, you know, you have to quickly resolve questions that arise to allow us to keep up with our productivity, and providing the best customer service possible by minimizing downtime. A lot, most of the times, I'm not sure how she does it, but it means stopping everything she has to do pretty much all day long to help people while still keeping focus on tasks and projects she's working on. She really does a really wonderful job of balancing that. And finally, to our citizens and our customers, our technology really reflects all aspects of our organization. That's why it's one of our town values. It helps us have a professional appearance, it makes a good impression, it makes it easier to communicate with us and do business with the town. We have See Click Fix integrated into our website for customers. We have integrated forums and payment platforms now, and these were special projects that evolved over time in response to feedback, and again, they just give a good impression of the town. So I want to really recognize Karen and thank her in appreciation of her hard work, and sense of curiosity, and always thinking about how to make the town better. So thank you for considering Karen as the 2025 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. It's my honor to introduce the Planning and Development Department's Employee of the Year nominee, Connor Twitty. He is our environmental planner. Connor manages one of the town's most unique and important programs, the Todd D. Kraft Septic Health Initiative. This program does so much for our community, from providing free septic inspections and filter cleanings, water bill credits, and offering low-interest repair loans and education that helps residents understand how their systems impact water quality and public health. When Connor stepped into this role, he knew he was following in the footsteps of his friend and mentor, Todd Kraft, who built the program from the ground up. That was no small task, but Connor embraced it with respect, humility, and a deep sense of purpose. He honored Todd's legacy while continuing to grow and strengthen the program in ways that will serve the town for generations to come. Connor's work extends far beyond the daily operations of the septic health program. He is leading efforts to map septic tanks and drain fields in town and connect that data with Dare County records, giving us the most complete picture we've had of how these systems function. He also manages our water quality and groundwater loggers. These collect critical data on how water moves throughout the town and impacts our community. This work is at the heart of our long-term strategy for water quality and resilience, and Connor's attention to detail ensures that data is accurate, reliable, and meaningful. He also coordinates the sand relocation and dune management cost share program. This helps oceanfront property owners maintain and strengthen their dune system that protects their homes and the town's infrastructure. He works closely with contractors and homeowners to make sure each project meets environmental and safety standards. He's earned their trust by being fair, consistent, and responsive, and that trust is a big reason that the program runs as smoothly as it does. This year, Connor also took the initiative to organize a contractor workshop in preparation for upcoming Division of Water Infrastructure 0% loan. This meant walking through our local septic contractors through some very complex requirements, such as the Davis Bacon prevailing wage certifications and the American Iron and Steel documentation. He made a very challenging process clear and approachable, and that kind of leadership helps build the relationships that make this program successful. Beyond his technical skill, what really sets Connor apart is the way that he represents the town. Whether he's talking with a homeowner about their septic system, walking along a property with wind-blown sand issues with a contractor, trying to figure out how to navigate that, or whether he's at Doughty Park, speaking with visitors about the community and the septic health program, he does it with warmth, with patience, and genuine care. People trust him because he's knowledgeable, yes, but also because he listens and he genuinely wants to help. When representatives from Mount Pleasant Water Works in South Carolina visited the town to learn about our program in hopes of starting their own, towards the end of their visit, the director said the program itself was impressive, but what truly made it special was the person running it. He said that the hardest part of starting their own program would be finding their version of a Connor. That was probably one of the best compliments that, that I've ever heard. Connor is also a great teammate, the kind of person who is always willing to help, pitch in whenever and wherever he's needed. in whenever and wherever he's needed, and he does it all with a positive attitude, humility, and a quiet pride in everything that he does. Connor, I want you to know how much I appreciate you, not only for how well you do your job, but for how you carry yourself, how you treat people within the community and outside of the community, how you treat people within the office, and the heart that you bring every day to your work here within the town. You've strengthened one of the town's most meaningful programs, honored its history, and ensured its future. You represent one of the best, you represent the best of the town of Nags Head, and we're proud to nominate you as the Planning Department's Employee of the Year and the nominee for the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year.
Next, if we could have Public Services.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to welcome Rich Miles is our nominee for Employee of the Year this year. I'd like to welcome his wife Lynn and his daughter Abby. Great being here. Since Rich has started with the town in August 2022, he has risen from Tech One to Crew Leader in Facilities Maintenance. He obtained a CDL and has been certified as a Traffic Control Supervisor and has his North Carolina Pesticide Applicator's License. Rich represents Public Services in the Team Advisy Group. I don't know the initials anymore. Rich has a positive can-do attitude that is contagious. He is a motivator who is respected by his fellow employees as well as his supervisors. Rich uses his common sense of how things work and patience to solve issues that arise in the field. He welcomes input from his team when problem-solving and is accountable for his decisions. Rich is always willing to help others in and out of his division. The clock does not dictate his day; getting the job done does. Rich is in charge of the seasonal grass cutting in the town, and he and his crew take pride in keeping the town looking sharp and litter-free. Rich has taken it upon himself to learn the, and operate the new sign printer at Facilities Maintenance and is now the go-to guy when it comes to signs. He has volunteered this summer, working holidays, to make sure that the town's residents and visitors enjoy clean beaches. Comments from his coworkers are: Rich leads by example. There is never a time when he's standing around just waiting for us to finish or go to the next job. He will always have a rake or shovel in his hand, working just as hard or harder than we do to complete the job. Rich encourages us to be the best we can be and to keep improving ourselves and the town. He makes the work lighter and the day go faster with his upbeat attitude. Rich is an asset to our town and our department, and his culinary skills endear him to our hearts in Public Services.
Next, I invite Chief Hale with the nominee for Police.
Mr. Mayor, I got to say about Rich, he's got some neat fish that he has a camera on as well that are pretty relaxing to watch there at the office. So he's into his fish as well along with cooking. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm pleased to announce the Police Department's 2025 Employee of the Year is Officer First Class Joseph Michael Tattersall. Tattersall has over a decade of law enforcement experience in North Carolina, working with agencies such as Cudwell Hills and the Dare County Sheriff's Office. In April of '23, Mike began his career with the Nags Head Police Department and has been a valuable member of the Patrol Division ever since that time. Mike is the complete package when it comes to being a police officer. He's professional, motivated, proactive, thorough, and an excellent role model for our younger officers. In addition to his regular assigned patrol duties, Officer Tattersall is a former member of our Emergency Response Team and a general instructor along with Radar, who regularly trains not only our staff but hosts classes here at our agency, which you have seen that we've had Radar this week, for other agencies here in the area to get training as well. Some of the comments submitted by his peers who nominated Mike for this award are: Tattersall consistently demonstrates a strong-worth ethic. Each day, he reports to duty. He is consistently one of, if not the most proactive officers we have. Tattersall dedicates a significant amount of his personal time to instructing various law enforcement training programs, many of which are conducted within our own department. Mike is a constant presence at work, always arrives with a positive attitude and looking to work and help others. His character alone is deserving of this award. We're very fortunate to have Tattersall join our department since '23. We're glad to have him here. He's a great mentor. It is for these reasons that we have selected him as the Police Department's Employee of the Year and nominate him to be the 2025 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award. Congratulations.
And last, but certainly not least, Chief, if you'll come up with the Fire Department nominee.
Before I begin, I'd like to thank and appreciate all of the members here, but two of them I would like to talk about. Those two, Rich and Connor spoil my Tuesday and Thursday night bowling every week by destroying our team. So congratulations. Good morning, members of the board. It's my honor to stand before you today and nominate Fire Lieutenant Trey Simmons for the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year. Trey is a dedicated leader in the Fire Department who consistently demonstrates professionalism, teamwork, and unwavering commitment to serving our community. As a fire lieutenant, he oversees his daily operations at the station, leads his crews during emergency responses, mentors new firefighters, ensures that the safety procedures are always followed. He is a steady leader. He's a calm presence. He has a very strong moral compass, and he makes, he is an essential part of our program. Trey goes above and beyond in every aspect of his work. He brings a positive can-do attitude to every shift. Truly living out our town values, that attitude is key. His optimism and calm under pressure inspire confidence in those around him, especially in the most intense situations. He also keeps his team in the know by communicating clearly and often, making sure everyone understands not just what needs to be done, but why it needs to be done. That kind of transparency has built trust, strengthened morale, and made his team stronger as a whole. Trey also lives our values of doing what's right for the right reasons, whether he's managing high-risk call or guiding the new firefighters through their first training. He leads with integrity, fairness, and accountability. And beyond emergency responses, he is deeply engaged in our community, volunteering for public safety events, school visits, fire prevention programs that help build lasting relationships between the department and the people we serve. His dedication extends beyond the firehouse walls. Trey is an active, valued member of the town's Team Member Advisy Group, where he represents the Fire Department with enthusiasm and professionalism. He contributes thoughtful input on benefit initiatives, staff engagement surveys, and the design of our new wellness center. He also helps plan and participate staff events, such as our bowling. You too. And always brings positive energy and creative ideas that promote our people-first culture. In addition, Trey has played a very key role in the work group that designed the town's workout facility, helping to ensure that it meets the needs of the first responders and to all town employees. These contributions show his deep commitment, not just to his department, but to the well-being of every member of our organization. Trey truly lives the belief that our people matter. He checks in on his crew, offers guidance, encouragement, creates an environment where everyone feels valued and supported. His compassion paired with his high standards motivates all others around him. He also embodies our values, our value of excellence requires innovation and curiosity, always looking for ways to improve training. I can't tell you how many times he's come up with a new tool or some idea and said, "Chief, can you find a way?" And I'm like, "I'll try." Always looking for ways to improve training, modernize our department's practices to better serve our community. And as always, Trey represents our Fire Department's core values of courage, commitment, and compassion. He shows courage under pressure, commitment to his team and his mission, and compassion to people he serves. And I'm just going to take one minute to tell you how he made his first impression on me. A few years back, we were, Ocean Rescue had been off the beach for a while, and Trey, and we had an ocean rescue call, and it was a pretty heavy surf. We had a rescue swimmer in the water. And all of a sudden, someone was standing beside me with a pair of fins, and it was Trey. And he was looking, and we were bringing the person in, and Trey, and I was looking, "Trey, what you call? What are you doing here?" And he's like, "My friend was renting a house down here, and I was afraid that it was him." And I was like, "I get it." And his friend walked up, and Trey turned, and just the look on his face and the hug that he gave the man just speaks to the character of the compassion and courage that you showed, and it made a big impression on me. And that's after 30 years of firefighting. So I just want to let you know that. In every sense, Trey Simmons exemplifies what it means to live our town values every day. His leadership, his empathy, his dedication reflect the best of us. For these reasons, I'm proud to nominate Fire Lieutenant Trey Simmons for the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award. Thank you so much, Trey.
I'm going to ask the, these nominees to indulge us for just a minute. I know they're on their feet. But you know, we've seen three things this morning that really show the values that this town has, that we serve our public with passion and sincerity and that we care about our employees. Not only does the board care about the employees, the employees care deeply about one another. To see us win a safety award of this caliber, put ourselves among a very small number of municipalities, because we want each other to be safe at work, to have another 20-year employee that shows that our employees love their jobs, they serve with longevity, they love what they do, and to have these employees who not only show up for work every day, but they do their jobs above and beyond, and every year they present us with one of the most difficult things that this board has to do, which is make a decision between five excellent, very excellent people. And I just want to say thank you to all of them and to the entire staff for creating this kind of organization that we get to kind of sit here at the head of. And I'll ask board members if you have any comments before we recess, and then we will take pictures with the nominees, with Kelly Wyatt, and then with our safety team.
Thank you. I'll echo what the mayor has said, but just congratulations to every of you. I know this is a town-wide award, but you still have won a tremendous award today, and we're so thankful for everything you guys do.
Would also echo what he's saying, but I would add in the fact that y'all get together and bowl after work, you know, means that you do like your coworkers, so that's an honor right there. Thank you.
No, I can't add much more. Congratulations to all of you, and we really appreciate everything that you do. Thank you.
All right. And so a motion would be in order to recess for photographs and to go in closed session to consider the Employee of the Year Award. Do I need to say which statute?
It's General Statute 143-318.11A2.
Very good. Thank you.
So moved, so moved, man.
I have that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The board will take our photographs, and then we will be in closed session.
All right, so that brings us next to public comment, and I will turn this over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each month, the Board of Commissioners invites members of the public to join in public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any matter of interest or concern to them. It is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the Board rarely responds to public comment. We do have a public hearing on the agenda today, and if you're here to comment on that, you should reserve your comments until we call that public hearing. But for anybody else, if you are interested in addressing the Board, if you'll please go to the podium, tell us who you are, and then address your remarks to the Board, and I will let you know when your five minutes is just about up. Mr. Muller?
Thank you, Councilor, Board. Thank you for the opportunity. I envy you that decision. I've did that for a while. And Mayor is absolutely right, it is by far the hardest. And it's, but it's hard for a really good reason. It's hard because you have outstanding employees. The five who were up there are reflective of the entire deep bench of the town of Magset. And it makes make, it's one of the things that makes this town such a special place for all its residents and visitors to live in and to enjoy. But there's something that doesn't make the town a special place to live in, and that's hunger. And the town and the county are facing a very unique situation today as nutrition assistance benefits are at this time not being paid, which means that Magset families and Deer County families will have to choose between paying their water bill and buying groceries. Paying their power bill, buying groceries. And I call upon you as a Board to stand up and lead in helping address that program. I suggest to you that you find a way to bring a thousand dollars a week to support the system, nutrition assistance programs in the county. It could be the Beach Food Pantry, it could be through the Albemarle Food Bank, it could be through other programs. The mayor participated in a program at the Community Care Clinic on Mondays, a volunteer for which I salute you. At a time when others are not leading, I call upon you folks as leaders in our community to set an example and find a way to bring a thousand dollars a week until such time as SNAP benefits are fully restored by, through either state or federal action. And set an example for how we at Magset deal with situations when our people are in crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Does anybody else wish to address the Board? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public comment session.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That brings us next to the consent agenda, which you have before you with eight items, and a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you. That brings us to a public hearing, and I will turn this over to Mr. Leidy and Kelly Wyatt.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider proposed text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance that are related to the town's crowd gathering permit process. And we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis provided by the 20-year employee and planning and development director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you so much. It really does not feel like 20 years at all. It's like yesterday. But says a lot about everyone here in the town, so I appreciate it. Moving into this, as you mentioned, this is a public hearing for a text amendment related to the town's crowd gathering process. This item ties into the broader update of the Chapter Four Town Code, which speaks to crowd gatherings, pickets, parades, outdoor amusements, and demonstrations. The review began earlier this year due to increasing demand for town use of, for use of town facilities, such as Doughty Park and the Soundside Event Site. Staff noticed that even with well-organized events, sometimes those were generating unintended side gatherings with impacts like noise, parking overflow, and traffic issues. Staff, the goal was to make the permitting process clearer and more predictable and easier to manage for both the town and the organizers of these events. So most of Chapter Four can be amended directly by the Board. However, there are two provisions that are located within the Unified Development Ordinance, and those required this formal legislative process requiring planning board review and then adoption by the Board of Commissioners and adoption of a statement of consistency. The UDO currently references a use called the Designated Public Event Site, and that's in Section 7.58, where you find the supplemental standards there. Originally, that language was meant only for the Soundside Event Site, but over time, it became ambiguous, and people felt like perhaps it applied to other properties within the town. Also, the permitting timelines in the Unified Development Ordinance for crowd gatherings did not align with those timelines set forth in Chapter Four. So the amendments that are before you today would clarify that the Soundside Event Site is the only location classified as the Designated Public Event Site. It would align deadlines between the Unified Development Ordinance and Chapter Four so that there's one single consistent process for large events at the Soundside Event Site. These changes do not add any new requirements. They're just to make the process more consistent. In looking at Chapter Four, there were some additional recommendations that we had. One was to just remove Article One of Chapter Four in its entirety. That's Sections 4, 4-1 through 4-5, and I included that in your packet. The definitions were outdated, and a lot of them were already included in the Unified Development Ordinance, so there was no need to duplicate them in both sections. We did want to preserve the hours of operation that was listed in Article One. Section Four, we wanted to move that standard from Section 4-2A into the UDO, and that's the definition for outdoor place of amusement and entertainment. I would note that we don't have any businesses currently that are noncompliant with this, but we just want to make sure that we maintain the language. We also wanted to update the definition of place of amusement and entertainment to eliminate outdated references. And you'll notice that there's reference to beer halls and nightclubs, things that we just don't allow. And just rely solely on our Table of Uses and Activities, which is in Section 6.6 of the UDO, as opposed to trying to list everything out. The cleanup is really just to make the code more consistent, modernized, and tracking with the crowd gathering requirements for Chapter Four. So I do have the ordinance language up on the screen for you and the public. You can see these minor changes to the Designated Public Event Site definition, the outdoor place of amusement and entertainment definition. You can see here the proposal to strike through those uses that are specifically defined and just rely on our Section 6.6, Table of Uses and Activities. And this is amendments to Section 7.58, just to ensure that the Designated Public Event Site is aligning with our same requirements for Chapter Four, which I believe you'll be hearing a little bit later on today. So that being said, the Planning Board at their September 16 meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval. As it has been presented, and staff's recommendation would also be adoption as presented. And there's a statement of consistency included in an attachment for your consideration as well. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions for Ms. Wyatt?
Yeah, just to clarify. So, so this is a cleanup of definitions, which I, which I appreciate, without any real change to the operation of the current event site. It does make reference to Chapter Four, which we will consider. So activities on the site could potentially be affected by whatever we adopt regarding, later regarding Chapter Four, but this by itself does not modify the activities on the site. Any questions, Commissioner Sanders?
No, that was it.
Anything else, Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposed text amendment? All right. Does the Board wish to receive any other information regarding this before you deliberate on the proposal? All right, if not, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing, and the Board may deliberate on the proposed text amendments.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Leidy. Understanding that we would need both a motion to adopt and a motion of consistency with the land use plan, may that be done as one motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any discussion or a motion? Happy to hear a motion.
I would make a motion to approve it as presented.
Okay, all right, thank you. With the consistency statement. All right, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there to be any discussion?
No.
All right, all right. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you. Motion passes. That brings us to reports and recommendations from the Planning and Development Director. So Kelly, just stay right there.
Thank you. I'll try to move through this pretty quickly. When the Planning Board met at their October 21 meeting, they had several items to review. The first was a vested rights special use permit site plan amendment for Magset Church to expand their parking lot. They voted unanimously to recommend approval of that. That's on your consent agenda today, and that will be public hearing in December. The next couple of items are actually, you'll hear later on from me, and that's an expansion to TW's Outdoor Outfitters, an expansion at Outer Banks Sports Club. And, and then also, they considered a text amendment to our flood damage prevention ordinance, which that's also on your consent agenda, to be public hearing in December. So the Planning Board's upcoming meeting, November 18th, we haven't had any citizen submittals, so we'll just continue working with the items that staff has been working on, including multifamily or existing commercial and the commercial outdoor recreation overlay district. So there were no Board of Adjustment hearings in the month of October. With regard to the Septic Health Advisory Committee, they met on October 13th. We had the intern that was introduced to the Board at the last meeting, Isabel Paula. She was available, and she presented some of the work that she's been working on and some ideas for some new social media outreach tools. Our environmental planner, Connor Twitty, gave a report on where we're at in terms of the Septic Health Initiative and their numbers. As of that meeting, we had had 34 septic inspections completed since July. Two low-interest septic repair loans had been processed, and 35 water credits had been issued. However, a townwide CRS mailer went out, as well as our PIO Roberta's newsletter, the Magset Lines, which had an article in there about the Septic Health Initiative. And Connor has said that the past two weeks, he has gotten a big uptick in people requesting inspections. So those two things have been very helpful. I did want to note that Connor also attended a, and David Ryan was with him, attended a symposium down in Beaufort, North Carolina about water quality and fisheries. And it's my understanding that that went exceptionally well. Everyone there was appreciative of our program, interested in how they would even begin to start something similar where they're from. So, so that went well. The Estrein Shoreline Management Plan, a lot of work continues to go on behind the scenes. We have been working on identifying a local environmental consultant to help us with some more community engagement, because we realize that that's going to be priority. The Tourism Board approved the revised concept for the Harvey Soundside Site, and they're looking at a rock sill for that. We hope to be back at your December meeting with a much more detailed update on the ESMP and where we're at with that. Sand relocation, that's going to begin November 17th, but we're already accepting applications. And we, we've received quite a few already. Staff are already meeting with contractors on site. So as soon as November 17th rolls around, these contractors can get to work. With regard to Doughty Park Events and the Art and Culture Committee, the Holiday Market application window, that opened on October 15th. It was open for two hours. We had over 107 applicants from that. We selected 50. And that was based on their attending all three markets, a commitment to attend all three markets, their product, their variety, having a tax ID number, and obviously, as noted previously, preference was given to those who resided in Magset. Holiday markets are set for November 8th, November 29th, and November 13th. Those are going to be from 9:00 to noon. The tree lighting ceremony coming up, November 29th, is going to be pretty special. We've added some holiday decorations, and then we're going to have some music from Manio High School students there to kind of set a festive tone. Tuesday Morning Yoga has wrapped up, but we do have a movie night coming up this Friday. That is going to be Fox and the Hound, and I'm going to be running that, so I hope everything goes smoothly. If the projector falls over, apologize. And what else? Art and Culture will be meeting next week, November 12th. So, and I have up on the screen some social media that we've put together for our upcoming holiday efforts. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
No questions, thank you.
Great, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
I think you stay there.
I do.
We are ready to consider the site plan for Coastal Blue Water Capital and TW's.
You're with me for one moment so that I can show the site plan as we walk through the staff report. Okay, so thank you. What is on the screen is a site plan that you're going to be considering today. We have US 158 over here on the east side, where the cursor is, and Sutterfield Landing to the north. Just for context, this is the existing principal structure, retail structure. This is the existing accessory structure, which is storage. And what we're considering today is this new area in between these two structures. So as noted, this is a site plan amendment submitted by Albemarle &amp; Associates on behalf of Coastal Blue Water Capital and TW's Outfitters. The proposal is for the construction of a 4,774-square-foot addition dedicated to storage space. And as we noted, that's going to be located between the existing retail and the existing storage. This property is owned C2, general commercial, and that's consistent with the surrounding uses. The principal use, which is general retail, is permitted, and the request qualifies as a major site plan amendment due to the amount of added habitable square footage and the amount of additional lot coverage being proposed. The new structure will serve as accessory storage for the main retail operation. And although the accessory storage will nearly equal the size of the principal building, it does remain subordinate in use and in function, meaning that it must fully support the primary retail business. In terms of lot coverage, the C2 District allows up to 55% lot coverage for the site. Compliance with lot coverage is going to be achieved through the recombination of the subject lot, the one that you see on the screen, recombination with the adjacent lot to the west. That is a vacant lot, and it is currently under same ownership. So if you were to just look at lot coverage for this property, it would not be compliant. It would exceed that 55. So in order to have additional area, it's going to have to be combined with that lot to the west. And so that was noted in your staff report. The Planning Board considered that as well. And it's been understood that no development permits, no land disturbance permits would be able to be issued until such time as those lots are recombined and considered one property. Otherwise, lot coverage would not be compliant. In terms of building height, proposed height is approximately 30 feet, so that's well within the town's height limit of 35 feet. The original building, I'll try to scroll down and show some architectural renderings here for context while we discuss it. Hopefully, that's helpful. The original building, which was constructed in 2005, was approved under older architectural standards. It required 100 architectural design points. The UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, now requires 150 points. That alone essentially makes this structure nonconforming with regard to architecture. And our nonconforming section of the UDO states that you can modify nonconforming structures so long as that modification isn't increasing the degree of nonconformity in any way. And what they've done here is proposed additional architectural elements over that new portion, over that new storage. They have proposed a porch roof with the same, the same porch roof, column trim, et cetera, so that when you run the porch numbers, you're still at 100 architectural design points. So the degree of nonconformity was not increased. It stayed the same, and they're actually a little over their 100 points. So with that in mind, they are compliant architecturally. With regard to parking, no additional parking is required because there is no parking space requirement associated with storage when it is truly accessory to your principal. But the site plan does show that they are restriping the existing parking. They're going from the 10-foot width requirement down to the recently adopted 9-foot width requirement. And that's going to allow them to add two or three additional parking spaces, which is necessary, because when looking at the site plan, there were previously some parking spaces in this area where they're now putting the storage addition. So they're picking up those parking spaces by restriping. So parking remains compliant. There are no changes being proposed to lighting or signage. Nothing about this request triggers additional landscaping, but if any is disturbed in the process of construction, they'll need to replace that and bring it up to compliance. Deer County Environmental Health has reviewed this and approved the existing wastewater system for this addition. That's included in your packet. Stormwater calculations have been reviewed and approved by the town engineer. Would note that this construction is in close proximity to their stormwater basin, so their erosion and sedimentation fencing will need to be up and installed properly prior to any activity occurring. The Fire Department reviewed and approved the plan. As we always say, it has to comply with North Carolina Fire Prevention Code. A new fire hydrant is going to be installed near the sprinkler, sprinkler connection. And I did want to bring attention to the fact that part of this addition includes sprinkling the entire building, so that, that will be part of this as well. Public Works also reviewed and approved this request as it's been submitted. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this site plan amendment at their previous meeting, noting that the recombination would have to occur prior to any permit issuance, and planning staff also recommends approval with that same condition. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We have John DeLucia with Albemarle &amp; Associates available, and Mr. Caston with Kahoon &amp; Caston, who worked on the architecture, available as well. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions?
No questions.
Sounds like everything's pretty much compliant, huh?
It is.
Okay, all right, thank you. I see John, anything you would add, John?
Yeah, staff, we're great to work with on this one. We are working right now on that, that lot for some development, so you'll see another site plan coming in in December. It's coming in in December, and, and we'll be talking about this site again.
Okay.
But we really need to get the stores one started now so that it's ready before the season.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. All right, then a motion might be in order. And then we'll ask for any discussion if there is any, but a motion to approve the site plan would be in order.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. A lot of folks probably know this already, but for the benefit of the public or anybody who decides to look at this and says the name Kahoon is on this plan, and he didn't recuse himself, I no longer have any financial interest in Kahoon &amp; Caston Architects, so.
Congratulations.
All right, so is there any discussion? Motion and a second for us? All right, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, great, thank you. Then we will move to a site plan. Then we will move to a site plan for Gowasa Holdings and the Outer Bank Sports Club.
Thank you, I apologize. Again, I wanted to just have the site plan up there for people to be able to review while we walk through this as well. This is a site plan amendment submitted by Albemarle &amp; Associates on behalf of Gowasa Holdings and the Outer Bank Sports Club. The request is to expand the existing fitness facility, which is located at 2423 South Croatan Highway. This includes a new two-story, 4,538 square foot addition, 1,795 square feet of new floor area within the existing building, plus an outdoor gym and training area. And you can see on the south side a tennis court, but that can also function as multiple pickleball courts as well. The property is owned C2, general commercial and indoor fitness and gymnasium is a permitted use. But because of the added lot coverage, or not the lot coverage, but the added habitable area, it does elevate this to a major site plan review. In terms of lot coverage, you can have up to 55 square feet of lot coverage in the C2 district. The existing site here was actually over that. It was at 56.6%, but this project will actually reduce lot coverage to 53.8% by using permeable paving and removing some unnecessary impervious surfaces out there. So with that, the lot coverage is now in compliance. For building height, the proposed addition has a height of 31.6 feet. So that's going to be meeting your 35-foot maximum height standard as well. Try to get to some architectural renderings. There we go. So the existing building here was built in 1992 and that was before the town had any architectural design standards at all. So the new two-story addition does have to comply with our current architectural design standards. And I've said this multiple times, but there's two paths to doing that. There's either the point system or just meeting some standards under the Division II Building Design. So what they have done is gone under the Article 10 Building Design Standards. What they've proposed is compliant with that. It has a first-story awning and they do have some faux dormers included for articulation. They've got the minimum 412 roof pitch. They're including residential-style windows that meet that 10% and 40% max. And they're showing lap siding that's going to be consistent with the town's design guidelines. I did want to note that the design, it was a thoughtful integration into trying to add something new to something old. And I just want to recognize that the time and effort that went into integrating this and bringing it up to today's standards was appreciated. So a lot of time and effort went into that. With regard to parking, the total indoor area plus the new is about 19,425 square feet. That requires 65 parking spaces. We don't have a requirement for outdoor gym, but just trying to include it just in case. Even that outdoor fitness area would require eight additional spaces. They have 81 spaces out there, so they do exceed the required parking standard. There's no additional landscaping being required based upon this proposal. As I mentioned previously, if any is disturbed during the course of construction, that will need to be restored. There is no new lighting proposed at this time. However, there will be some lighting proposed at the tennis court/pickleball area. When they're ready for that, they'll need to submit their information for their light fixture, their photometrics, et cetera, and have that approved. And there is no new signage being proposed at this time. Environmental Health has approved the wastewater capacity. That was included in your packet. Stormwater management and traffic circulation have all been reviewed and approved by the town engineer. The fire department has reviewed the plan. Same as TW's, the entire building will now be protected with sprinkler system. And the applicant has noted that they will coordinate on future hydrant placement with the fire department. Public Services has also reviewed and approved the plan as it's been proposed. When the planning board met in October, they voted unanimously to recommend approval and staff recommends approval as well. And happy to answer any questions again. John DeLucia and Mr. Caston are available.
Any questions, Commissioner Sanders?
No, thank you.
Mr. Sears?
I have a question for John.
Yes, sir.
John, the elevation of the retention pond on the side occasionally, more often than not, exceeds, water exceeds that. I don't notice any changes in elevations on this site plan. I'm sure it's been considered in stormwater, but with the added roof and most of this parking lot already being pervious, how do you contain that extra water?
The way that stormwater was originally designed for this site was everything went to the pond. The pond overflows to the DOT right-ofways. And you can see there's an overflow structure on the lower right-hand side of that pond. Since the shopping center went in next door, their stormwater basin is just on the other side of this. And what's happening is we do have some problems with the parking that is along the east side of the pond because the water comes up in the back. We're eliminating that parking at this point.
So elevated tennis courts?
And we've also reduced the lot coverage, so we shouldn't have as much water going to the pond. I will tell you a couple of things.
John, can you lean a little closer to the mic?
Sure. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
For the most part, yes, sir.
There's a couple of things I just want to make everyone clear about. The new two-story addition, the owners are planning on doing a youth gym, which I think is really unique for what we're doing here. The upstairs will be an aerobics room. The internal square footage addition will be on the second floor and connect to the existing second floor. It'll be more cardio equipment. There will be an elevator put in this building now so that both floors will be ADA compliant. The outdoor recreation or outdoors fitness area, we've assumed that that's going to be 100% lot coverage because we probably will pour that in concrete and then put artificial turf grass on top of it to make it look nice. It's been accounted for in stormwater also and in lot coverage.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner? All right, very good, thank you. See, no further questions, then a motion would be in order.
Send it.
All right, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Thank you, appreciate staff. And I know this is probably a little bit of a difficult thing to do, to get the lot coverage down and make all of that work. So appreciate the good work. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Great, thank you. All right, Joe, that brings us to the Harvey Sound Event Living Shoreline Project.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Let me get this up. Don't know how that happened. All right, thank you. Just wanted to give a brief update on the progress on the Harvey site living shoreline design. Not sure where that went. Okay. Sorry about that. So last month, showed you guys a sort of marked-up concept drawing. Not sure why that keeps going out. That basically incorporated the comments from the initial concept design that was presented to the tourism bureau. And then we had a stakeholder engagement meeting with users of the site. Provided, they all provided comments. This drawing is the schematic drawing that was approved at the tourism board in October. You can see some changes and adjustments from the design that you saw last month where there's this larger access sort of box instead of the trivial pursuit pipe that was there. And that was a direct result of the feedback received from those stakeholders on the deep-water channel access for kiteboards and catamarans. Then also, you can see the sill has sort of been moved behind the gazebo, which comments from John and the tourism board about the view shed and, you know, people getting married and taking photos off of that gazebo. So this design was approved unanimously at the tourism board in October. We are moving forward with putting our permit package together. We have our pre-application meeting later this month. And then we will be able to submit for permitting. Happy to answer any questions. Appreciate John working with the town on behalf of the tourism board.
Great. Any questions, folks? Observations?
These designs primarily hardened structures or are they partially hardened and living or?
The tourism board did choose to go with a rock sill, which, and then this is a marsh sill, but rock is the preferred option. It provides some habitat value, to my understanding. Maybe not as much as some of the proprietary materials, but also replacement and maintenance of proprietary structures. You know, that might be challenging in the years ahead. But the idea is that hopefully this will extend the marsh and protect further erosion of land behind it with environmental benefits.
All right, I understand, thank you.
Great. All right. Very good. And timeline generally?
Hopefully, we'll have permits, submitting for permits in the next couple of months. And then by June, we should have to be under contract for construction. And then hopefully, construction will be complete sometime late August or in the fall of '27, '26.
'26, all right, very good. All right, great, thank you. All right, that brings us to old business and items tabled from the previous meeting, and Andy.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So back in August, we came to the board requesting to conduct a project to amend several sections of our code that deal with events, crowd gatherings, and group demonstrations. And we stated several reasons for that. Obviously, the sections of the code that dealt with these things hadn't been updated in a long time and we felt like it needed to be updated based on circumstances surrounding a lot of the events we had seen. There's certainly been a growing number of events in the town over the years and it's starting to burden the town's capacity to deal with the events. And so we felt like we needed to really take a look at the ordinance and see how it could support our ability to plan for orderly events, but also to be able to apply resources to the events. So with that said, Kelly did a good job talking about the first part of this, which was modifying part of Chapter 4 and putting it into the UDO, dealing with the public event site and also dealing with the outdoor amusements. Previously, Chapter 4, the beginning of that section, talked about outdoor amusements and really regulated the hours of operation for those and dealt with certain lighting and signage issues related to those. I think that ordinance was written a really long time ago and there's been a lot of changes. You know, I think since that time, the commercial outdoor recreation overlay district was adopted and the majority of our amusements have been directed to that area of the town. And as Kelly said, none of the current businesses currently violate the hours of operation. And the lighting and signage is also regulated by the zoning ordinance in the UDO. So we feel like it's pretty well-covered, that aspect of it, so that was taken out of Chapter 4. So what remains in Chapter 4, we're proposing, is a revised crowd gathering ordinance and also group demonstrations. And so we've provided that ordinance in your packet and I'll kind of go through that briefly. So what we're doing is suggesting that Chapter 4 of the ordinance be replaced in its entirety. So rather than providing you with an underline and strike through version of that, you have a brand-new ordinance. We've got a new definition for crowd gathering activity. And I would say the majority of the change surrounds creating tiers for events. And previously, we didn't break events up into tiers. We simply said that if you're proposing to have an activity with 100 or more persons, you have to get a crowd gathering permit, which has to be submitted three weeks prior to the activity. Now we're suggesting that several different things would trigger a crowd gathering permit, obviously having 100 or more persons. But also, if you propose to close a public street, if you want to locate an event on the public beach, if you want to have a concert or live performance or use fireworks or amusements, then all those things individually would trigger a crowd gathering permit. And then if you look at the tiers we've created, so the tiers are based on the size of the event, meaning the number of total participants. But also, depending on if you have certain things incorporated into the event, you become either tier one, tier two, or tier three. For instance, if you want to have a concert with live music with amplified sound, that automatically becomes a tier two, even if it's less than 250 people. So a tier one is 100 to 250 people, tier two, 250 to 750, and tier three, 750. So now the seafood festival, for instance, would be a tier three activity. The primary difference between these is that the submittal timelines for these things changes depending on the size. So a tier two activity now requires the application to be submitted 60 days ahead of time. Tier one is 15 days and a tier three is 90 days. And there are also different fees for each tier. So the fee is essentially $100 for tier one, 200 for tier two, and 300 for tier three. Obviously, that's to cover the town's costs for reviewing the applications. We do have an internal review committee that reviews every application. For the larger events, we have meetings with staff. And so to cover the staff's time, the previous fee of $100 really didn't do that. And so, you know, you can kind of look through that section of the ordinance. There's a section that talks about the town manager's office is the responsible agency for reviewing the applications. We reference a crowd permit coordinator, which is Deputy Town Clerk Katie Anzalone. That would be the designated person to be the coordinator. And then obviously, the applications, once they're received, are circulated to all the departments. We bring the applicant in, we meet with them, we go over all of our concerns. Sometimes we suggest modifications to the event or we ask for more information. That's all part of the process. One of the things I'll say about the ordinance, the way it was written previously and then this new ordinance, there is an appeal process if your event is denied. And that appeal is handled by the Board of Commissioners. And that's the way it was written previously. We hadn't proposed to change that. But with the previous submittal timeline of three weeks, it didn't really allow for enough time for that. So that's why we've increased the timelines for the larger events to 60 and 90 days so that not only gives us enough time to plan, to resource the event, but also to get the application or the appeal to the board if that's required, if that happens. I will say that we've rarely denied any permits for events. We've usually been able to work with applicants to modify the event or to ask them to provide additional resources for the event. And that process generally works pretty well. There could be some circumstances where we would... There could be some circumstances where we would consider denying event in the future. Obviously, if they haven't met the requirements of the ordinance, that would be denial. But if there's a chance that the proposed event would result in violations of any local or state laws and that could be based on what they're proposing to do or say it's an event that's occurred in the past and there's been a history of violations with an event, those would all be factors that could be considered in reviewing an application and considering denial. So that's all included in the ordinance. There is a section on insurance requirements, which has always been in there. There is an ability to request a waiver for the insurance, depending on whether the event would sort of not require insurance based on the circumstances, so that is in there. We have a section on standards of review. Essentially, your event is only valid for seven consecutive days and you can't have the same event more than once every 25 days. There are a few other things in here, dealing with signage, with noise. It references other sections of our code. Obviously, any event has to comply with any section of our town code. Getting a crowd gathering permit doesn't waive any of our current code requirements. One of the things we've added to this ordinance is some special requirements dealing with parades, which we didn't have previously. This is just providing a little bit more information to the town on how the parade's going to be organized, who's going to be in charge, how the parade's going to be structured in terms of the number of marshals that are in the parade, managing what's happening, the order of the entries or the units and who's going to be operating vehicles and the types of vehicles in the parade. And so we've done a little research with some other communities. There have certainly been some issues nationwide and also in North Carolina with parades and so we feel like we needed to do this in order to sort of protect the town if we're issuing permits for a parade. It's obviously a very large event. There's a special insurance requirement for a parade that's greater than an insurance requirement for any other type of event, so that's in here as well and that's something we found from other communities. So certainly this is a lengthy section of the code. It's something that you'll want to look at closely. Some of the sections we had in here previously about events exceeding expected attendance or liability remain unchanged. Town Attorney John Leidy and his staff helped us review the group demonstration section of this ordinance and we've provided some revisions to that. Some of the things we've looked at, if you have a group demonstration or picket line of 15 or fewer persons that doesn't require a permit, if you have an event that's 15 to 100 persons, that is something that requires a permit from the police chief and they have to submit that 72 hours in advance. However, if it's 100 or more persons, it has to meet the requirements of a crowd gathering. So then you also have to get a crowd gathering permit and meet some of the ordinance requirements, including the timelines. So if you're going to have a large group demonstration, say 500 people, that application would have to be submitted 60 days ahead of time. So it allows for a little bit more planning than we had previously in the ordinance for a large group demonstration. And I think that in large part covers the chapter four revisions that we're proposing. There's another section in here that deals with town of Nag's Head Park use regulations, which is town code section 26.13. Simple amendment to that regarding firearms, previously didn't prohibit them. We wanted to make sure that was included. There's a section on the use of Doughty Park. This is something that's been discussed amongst staff quite a bit. Doughty Park has become one of the most popular places on the Outer Banks to have events. We obviously programmed Doughty Park heavily in the summertime with all of our events. We have farmers markets, concerts, movies. There's a whole variety of things that happen and so we've already burdened Doughty Park quite a bit in the summertime with the things the town is doing there. And then we're getting requests to use the park all the time from churches, from other organizations for benefits, you know, for fundraising activities, for demonstrations. And so it's getting to the point where we really have to think carefully about how it's being managed. And so what we're proposing in the town Doughty Park use policy is that essentially between June 1st and September 30th, we're really going to just reserve the park for the town's events. It's the town's facility. It was really designed to be a central gathering point for our community and for community planned events. We're already pretty much tapped out in the summertime with our resources and so we feel like it's best to reserve the use of the park for town-sponsored events during the timeframe from June 1st to September 30th. And then what we're proposing is to limit the number of non-town-related events that we would approve during the period outside of that timeframe. And we sort of proposed some options for the board to consider either one or either two or three non-town-related events per month outside of the summer season and then limiting how many activities any one organization could request within a month. And so those things have been suggested in the town's Doughty Park policy. There is a revision to the town park policy to add the skate park and also to add Whalebone Park, which we have a new pavilion that I believe is opening up today. Thanks Nancy.
Very good.
So it would include Whalebone Park in the reservation system we already have for some of the parks. And so that's a fairly simple amendment we included here. And then finally, we have a fee schedule amendment, which I already went over based on the tiers. So, you know, I would say that the change is being proposed with chapter four, with the policies, with section 26 of our code, it's a lot. It's a lot to digest. It affects applicants who've done events in the past. They're going to have to consider doing things a little bit differently. We are going to have to develop some new forms and some new informational pieces to give out to applicants with this ordinance. So sort of throwing this out there for the board's consideration, perhaps you take a month to review all these changes and understand them and ask questions and perhaps we can have a vote on this in December. You know, the more we look at this, the more we see. You know, we'd like to think that we write a perfect ordinance on the first try, but that never happens. And so I think Perry already saw one thing that we should change after we publish the packet. It's a minor change, but still it's a change that makes it accurate. And so I'm sure when you review it, you'll see things too that you'll either have questions about or you'll want to change. And so just throwing that out there for your consideration, but happy to receive any feedback or comments on what's been done. And I want to thank all the staff that worked on this. It was a team effort. Really want to thank Town Clerk Brittany Phillips for, she kind of led this. And then Katie, our Deputy Town Clerk, Kelly Wyatt in Planning and Chief Hale, Deputy Chief Montgomery, Fire Department, Nancy, everybody participated in reviewing this. So appreciate all their help.
Thank you, Andy. I do appreciate the work the staff has done. It's a very thoughtful, I think, approach to all of these issues. I do have several questions and an observation. John, this is something we can act on without public hearing?
Correct. It's a police power ordinance.
All right.
This part of it is. What y'all did earlier was the part that goes into the UDO.
Right. So do we know what the Visitors Bureau, as a user of the event site, have they had a chance to consider this?
We have not shared this with them directly. Other than publishing it in the packet, that's certainly something we could do now that we have a draft.
Okay. All right. I have a question for the chief, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium. Y'all can move those tables further away from the wall. What was the correction you wanted to make on this? Do you recall?
There was one for continuous motion under group demonstration. Obviously pickets and other ones like that, it was constant, moving back and forth. Group demonstrations, they just kind of stand there with signage. That was the one thing.
Just talk just a little bit about the level of planning that y'all need in terms of time and effort for an event that is 100 or more people and generally either in close proximity to 158 or crossing 158.
How deep do you want this?
I'm sure you could write a thesis on this, but I'm sure it's significant.
Nag's Head's a great place. I love working here. Everybody loves coming here. Sometimes too many people love coming here. And without proper notice, I don't have the staffing needs to handle things when it's short notice. I like the 15-day rule for small events because we can improvise, adapt and overcome every day. But when we have large events and the manager's pretty correct, we've basically never told anybody no, we make it work. Sometimes making it work puts a lot of stress on everybody involved. With our staff, they've got kids, have days off and trying to pull people in. Last-minute notice trying to do things. We already outsource a lot of off-duty with the Sheriff's Department for the large events at the event site being with, I've got staff that's already had plans in place for school, travel, baseball, softball, family events, or either we've got injuries or somebody's out sick. So we rely on the Sheriff's Department a lot, being that they have countywide jurisdiction so we don't have to get into any types of agreement with other municipalities to be able to bring their law enforcement in. Mutual aid kind of works as it's got to be at an emergency. We could work under that, being that we have numerous amount of people today's, the world that today is in where people are always looking for opportunities to be able to staff things. We can look at that as an emergency to do an agreement with them. It's just easier, obviously, to contact the Sheriff's Department to supplement our staff. We have to look at the number of people there, any obstacles that are with the roadways. If people are too close, it doesn't take anybody but to change the radio station or look at a phone or spill your coffee and you might veer three or four feet and if people are close to the edge of the roadway, that can turn into a nightmare on everybody that's involved, those responding, those that are there. So we try to look at everything. My biggest goal when crowd permits come in is the overall safety. Safety for the participants, the safety of those traveling around that would be affected and our staff. So it takes a little bit of planning and it gets stressful. The biggest thing with this is that timeframe. The way it's written, I like it, but I'm sure there's going to be pushback if we deny somebody that they didn't meet that timeline and that's got to be understood by everybody involved that if you don't meet the timeline, then, I mean, to me, you don't, if you bring me something three days when it's a 15-day minimum, to me, it should automatically be stamped deny. There's no other questions. So, and I'm sorry that they didn't do it, but, I mean, if you're putting on an event, you need to prepare yourself and just don't dump it on someone else. I know I'm being frank.
No, thank you. No, that's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you. And then before I pass it off to the rest of the board, I'll make an observation. How many years has the parade, the Kelly's St. Patrick's Day Parade been running the town?
Thirty-one, thirty-two, skip a year with COVID somewhere in there.
Okay. So it's been a long time. The town has never charged them, you know, for the services we provide on that day. I mean, and a lot of people are involved in that and I know it's a cherished tradition and they're going to feel like they're being picked on, you know, no matter what we do. We are remarkably lucky that we haven't had something happen in the past at an event like that. It gives me the willies. You know, small children, candy and vehicles and that kind of proximity just gives me the willies. And so I appreciate the fact that we are going to hear some pushback on this, probably related to that. It's a lot of paperwork for a lot of units in a parade, but anywhere else in the world, it's what you would do. And the fact that we've done it this way for 30-some years doesn't mean we need to do it for one more. If we should fix it, we should fix it. And we are going to get pushback, I think, from groups that think that we are picking on them about their events at one park or another for reasons that are outside of public safety and they're not public safety and I, for one, am ready to back up staff, you know, that we have to do this for public safety reasons. And finally, I appreciate your concern, Andy, about the scope of this. So it's up to the board whether y'all want to act and give people who are planning events a little more time or whether we think a month doesn't matter, in which case a new board will take this up. But I'm prepared to move either way and I think I should start on this end. Commissioner Sanders?
I'm good with it. I mean, I think, you know, you need time to prepare, especially if you have to have a review committee that comes through the Board of Commissioners if you have a denial. So, I mean, it's something we can consider and something we can talk about, but I think they put some effort into it so far.
All right. Commissioner Sears?
I like the safety of it. I think if you pass it today, maybe you do a 90-day probationary period for those who weren't planning on doing it until three days before. And that gives them opportunity to get a 60-day permit if they wanted a 60-day permit.
Commissioner Lambert?
I appreciate what Commissioner Sears said about the safety. I do have one question for the police chief. Typically, how many police officers do we have on duty on a given day during the day?
For a 24-hour day or, we do 12-hour shifts. So in 12-hour shifts, our patrol division will have five out. There'd be a squad as a sergeant and two patrol officers. We have a K-9 that works at 12 to 12 and then with the positions that we added two years ago, we put them on a mid-to-mid so that way they can assist with day shift and night shift. We are one short right now. We have one that is in retirement, so basically we're too short. And then we have our CID out in administration as well.
Okay. And then typically for a tier three event, I know this is new, but for a tier three event, let's say 750, how many officers would you need for that event?
Basically with, say, a large scale, if we reference the parade, everybody that's off is usually working. And then I pull some from the mid-shifts to help cover within there as floaters, et cetera. We put people at intersections to monitor, to deal with different things that might arise. Large events at the event site, we have six and then the duty shifts will help monitor as well, but six working. Four of them dedicated to a crosswalk. If we could stop right there, that would cut four out for, you know, a crosswalk because that doesn't do anything, but, I mean, it's not any safer. We're just going to get hit before anybody else does. I mean, if you look at it, I mean, we do our best with it.
Well, I really want to get y'all out of the road.
With that answer, I do appreciate the safety concerns, just hearing how many people we have on and how many people we have to assemble if something's not. But I also do appreciate the town manager's suggestion on waiting a month so that we can digest all of this as well.
I'd rather do it cleanly than sort of with a probationary thing too, if you don't mind. So...
There's one more thing that we talked about the other day. When we talk about possibly having no more than two or three events per month at Doughty Park, we need to write in there something of how we determine priority, you know, because in some cases it would be first come, first served, but if you've had a longstanding event that's existing, one example would be Arages. You know, we want to write something in to deal with that.
All right. So it sounds like probably we're going to deal with this next month. Can you get your forms and paperwork ready so that if the people start walking in the door, middle of December, you can start taking applications?
Well, we can certainly try. I think when the ordinance was first suggested, one of the goals was by the beginning of the calendar year to have the process in place. And I know the board, when they first heard that suggestion, said, "Well, let's try to get it here in front of us in November so in case we have changes or things to work out." But so whether we have all of our forms ready by December or January 1...
There's no reason to squeeze you. So if, just without a motion, just if the board's okay, we will deal with this at our... There's no reason to squeeze you. So what, if, if, just without a motion, just if the board's okay, we will deal with this at our meeting in December. And on that schedule and hopefully get it done. Yep.
Can you add a sample, um what do you call it, um emergency, sample emergency? Something happens, where they go, can you add, add something into your packet for that?
Emergency action plan?
Yeah.
This, this is in there.
It's required, but I'm saying most, some people might not, Mike Kelly's not gonna know what an emergency action plan is.
We, we worked with him last year.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, are we good? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to uh new business and that we'll, we'll start with committee reports and I'll start with Commissioner Lambert.
Kelly gave an excellent report in Septic Health. We do not, we have not had a government education access channel meeting yet. I don't believe we are actually gonna have one in November, but we should have one in December.
All right, very good. Commissioner Sears.
They reported, we, Joe reported that we passed the downside event site, the tourism board. That's it.
All right, very good. Um we did have a Jeanette's Pier Advisory Board Committee that I was able to attend and um they had a great summer. I, I am very impressed with um uh the activity, the level of activity that they support there in terms of school groups and visitors. And, and folks fishing there. A, a real brief aside, I was there giving, I went there to give blood yesterday. There's a guy walking up with his wagon getting ready to go fishing. He sees my tag on my bicycle that says mayor. He says, are you the mayor? I said, yes. So we struck up a conversation. He was a planning commission member from Flint, Michigan, who comes down here every year to go fishing. And it takes him two days to drive down here, but uh he loves Jeanette's Pier, he loves Nax Head. So that was a, that was a pretty neat um interaction. You will hear, uh they are going to be in the process of replacing the planking. And uh that's gonna be, that's gonna take part of the pier out of commission at some point, so you're probably gonna hear about that. But it's going to be a very durable uh solution. Once it's finished, the, the uh memorial fish that people put in that are cut into the boards, there is going to be an alternative display for those because the material they're using doesn't allow those fish to be cut into the, cut into the, the planks going forward. Commissioner Sanders.
Um I think staff pretty well covered the uh Estorin Shoreline Committee Report, but I am excited after, what, a couple of years to see this finally getting off the ground and, and, and looks like it's gonna happen, so. Good news.
Very good. All right, thank you. Uh that brings us to consideration of appointments and reappointments to uh boards or committees. We have a, the Arts and Culture Committee. We have three people whose terms are, have expired and are interested in being reappointed. They are Shelley Gates, Jeremy Russell, Russell and Peggy Saporito. We have a vacancy that we have previously discussed and you also have a candidate chart um uh attached uh to, to this in your, in your packet. So let's, let's deal with uh, let's deal with those two separately and a motion to reappoint those who are interested in being reappointed uh first.
Mayor, do we need to do those individually or can we make a motion to reappoint all three?
John.
You can, you can do it uh as a group as, as long as you can get a vote on, on that slate. But you can do that.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint all three.
Okay, all right, that would be Shelley Gates, Jeremy and Peggy Saporito. Uh is there, did I get second? All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. And then uh we uh need an appointment to fill the seat um for Carrie Oakesmith Sanders.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to uh appoint Melanie LaFontaine.
Okay, very, very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Um and uh she's, not only is she a member of Arts and Culture and a, a vendor at the market, but she's also an exit business person with a, with a going and growing business. Um so I, I support that as well. So all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Great, thank you very much. That brings us to consideration of the fall beach condition survey. David, you thought you were gonna go to sleep back there, but you gotta, gotta do something today.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. We've, I think everybody's been aware of the recent storm activity that we've had offshore that has resulted in noticeable conditions to portions of our beaches. We have contacted our engineering consultant, Moffitt and Nickel, as well as uh supporting surveying services with McKimmon Creed in order to move forward with a fall beach condition survey. This survey and analysis um will deliver critical data and um and, and just give the board a, a sense of the existing beach condition um after these recent storms to be able to aid in the decision-making project for the upcoming beach nourishment project, uh which is currently out to bid. We've uh received proposals from McKimmon Creed in the amount of forty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars for land-based and water-based surveys, as well as a separate proposal from Moffitt and Nickel in the amount of twenty-six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the analysis. So um the, the, their request is for the adoption of the Beach Nursery Maintenance Capital Project Ordinance Amendment Number Seventeen. And that will cover not only this fall survey, but also next summer's um beach condition survey as well. And so um staff recommends adoption of the beach ordinance in support of the fall beach condition survey to evaluate uh recent storm-related impacts. Um and as noted, this will cover both this current fall survey as well as the summer survey. And so the specific action requested is uh for board to consider the adoption of the Capital Project Ordinance Amendment Number Seventeen uh to move forward with the beach condition survey.
Which totals sixteen thou- sixteen million five seventy-one nine hundred and five. I'll bring that up.
What you're increasing, which increases to that number that he's talking about?
Yeah.
Yes, although I'm looking at all the modified numbers, Sam.
Yes, so that, that total modified number would be sixteen million five hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and five dollars.
With, with the new surveying and monitoring, two hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars.
That is correct.
All right, very good. All right, a motion would be in order?
Submit.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All right, great, thank you. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, great, thank you, David.
Uh thank you, I just want to mention that the results of those surveys should be ready for the board uh for your mid-December workshop.
Very good.
Did, did they complete the survey yet?
They have partially completed the survey. Um they started this past weekend. They ran into some weather on Monday and so they had to pull off, um but they had completed all the way from the north end down to about Indigo Street. And then they were gonna go ahead and uh try to remobilize and finish the survey this week.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney. Do you have anything other than the closed session?
I do have one thing, Mr. Mayor. I just want to comment on the, the crowd gathering um ordinance and the, which also deals with group demonstrations and just something I want y'all to um, to keep in mind, which you may all be completely familiar with, but I think it bears noting and that is that the um, this is an ordinance that's designed to regulate activity that's protected by the, the US Constitution. And um you know, absent an ordinance, there's very little that the town can do to control or impose any kinds of uh regulation on these events. The law does allow the town to, to adopt an ordinance like this to impose uh time, place and manner restraints and regulations on these kinds of activities and that's about what you can do. And so the ordinance is, is, is lengthy and it's complicated in order to try to comply with what your limitations are, as well as to impose clear and enforceable restrictions. So I just wanted to, to mention that um so that y'all could keep that in mind as you were considering that ordinance. But other than that, I'll, I, I just have the closed session.
I, I did mean to ask about the firearm clauses. Um we're clear constitutionally that knowing public land, we can.
Yes, and in fact, there's a specific state statute that prohibits them from being uh involved in certain crowd gathering activities. So uh this is actually not just in, and that is something that is important because absent of state law, uh the, the state statute on that, we might've had some difficulty in terms of how we regulated that. But as it is, this is in compliance with a North Carolina state law provision.
Okay, very, very good, thank you. Uh that brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town manager and we have something from Roberta.
I'm here to update you on, I better be sure I pay attention to what I tell everybody else to do.
Right.
I'm here to update you on a historical, on a request for a historical marker at the site of the former Nax Head Life Saving Station near where our uh Epstein Public Beach Access is currently located, just down the beach road from here. Several mo- months ago, Mr. Ralph Buxton asked you to consider installing a marker to commemorate, commemorate the life-saving station and its, its subsequent uses. After must, much research and a lot of help from Mr. Bu- Buxton and assistance from town clerk Brittany Phillips, we're following up on that request and with a proposed marker. I won't read the text on the marker because it's part of the packet and it's online, but I just wanted to provide a little background very quickly. Just as a reminder, it's, it's, it's amazing story and I appreciate Mr. Buxton for, for bringing it to us and uh reminding us of how important the site is. The original Nax Head Life Saving Station constructed in eighteen seventy-four was one of the earliest stations built to safeguard the Mariners as part of the US Life Saving Service. The facility served as a base for many heroic rescues, carried out as uh both its time as a US Life Saving Station and then later as a station for the US Coast Guard. It also played a critical role in defending our coast during World War One and World War Two. Think about the stories of all the submarines that were off the coast here during World War Two and that's, that, that's a pretty heavy legacy that the station just right down the road from us had. Sadly, both this, the original station and then its nineteen twelve replacement were lost over time. Uh the final structure, which served as a critical army radar defense site, helped to monitor and protect nearby military assets such as those up in Norfolk. That suffered severe damage during the Ash Wednesday Storm in nineteen sixty-two and was later demolished. Sorry, here's a plug for our video. If you don't know a lot about the Ash Wednesday Storm, uh go to youtube.com Town of Nax Head and there's a fascinating, fantastic video there for you. So there's nothing there at, 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 there's nothing um at the site right now to commemorate the courage and the service of those who worked there, so we ask you to uh consider this, consider this information and the installation of a marker at this site. Uh the cost. Sorry, excuse me, go ahead.
I thought you were done.
I, I know, I thought I was too, sorry.
I said I'd like to make a motion to approve the marker at this site.
Yeah, let me go ahead and take a second, then we'll let Roberta finish.
I was just going to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there a second today? Okay, all right, Roberta.
The cost will be about thirteen hundred dollars.
I love this. I, I have always wondered where this station was and I'm really glad to, to see this history and thank you Ralph for bringing this to us. I think this is gonna be a nice addition to the, to the town. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Um any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh that brings us to the Board of Commissioners' agenda. I'll start, Commissioner Lambert, do you have anything today?
I do not.
Commissioner Sears.
I'd like to congratulate the two winners of yesterday's election and thank the town and its staff for having me serve on this board for the last eight years. Thank you.
And we appreciate your service very much, Mike. More to be said on that another time. Commissioner Sanders.
Yeah, thank you. No, I don't have anything.
Okay, all right, very good. Um I did not have anything on the mayor's agenda, um but um in light of Commissioner Moller's request, I do want to have a little bit of discussion about uh where we are and whether uh the town might uh do something in the short term. Thing is, we don't know how long this, this situation's going to last. There are agencies and resources dedicated to feeding folks. There are mechanisms like the, the food distribution that um, that was earlier this week at, at the clinic. And so I'm wondering if there are um things we might do either including uh financial contribution or uh otherwise. I will say, um I have some reservations about um dedicating tax funds to that purpose on an open-ended basis. And um and depending on what y'all think, I may have a, I may have another suggestion. But um I also talked to the manager yesterday a little bit about, if you don't mind, Andy, um about you know, possibly having a collection site here. Uh that would make it a little more convenient for people to drop off food and uh the town to provide the transportation up the beach to the, to the food pantry, which I think would be a nice gesture for, for the town.
Yes, Kelly suggested something to me the other day. Um as I said, she's very compassionate and well aware of what's going on. And so she asked if we could have a collection site um for people to drop off food items. And knowing that there's the food bank that distributes these items, we could, we could certainly do something like that and then just staff could deliver the items routinely up to the food bank and they could distribute the items. That's one thing we could do, um so that, that would be in keeping with what the mayor, former mayor suggested. And we, we could also set up some sort of uh donation as well.
Well, if you're talking about a, a donation, I mean, one of the things, and I, I suggested this to um, to, to the mayor and uh he was amenable to this, um is that um I would, he and I would pen a letter together. And we would challenge um the newly elected, uh the sitting and past board members to donate uh at this critical time um with a, a substantial goal of um perhaps raising as much as five thousand dollars uh through that resource to show, I think, our leadership as a, as a group of people and our, our concern, especially at this particular time. So I don't know that that's necessarily something that requires a board action, but I, I would um be happy to, to work on such a letter, uh to get some signees, to get that out promptly and uh, and to contribute. And just, does the board have any thoughts on, on that?
I, I like that idea. Um I would support it and I uh I would definitely like to discuss this in December to look at all options and maybe not necessarily choose one, maybe choose multiple.
Okay.
But I, I really appreciate Mayor Moller coming this morning and I hope that we can do a lot of stuff with that.
Okay, all right, very good.
If you wrote a, if you wrote a check out and brought it to the town as a donation, who would you make the check out to?
Well, what, what I would suggest, uh, I'm sorry.
Are you thinking?
Uh what I, what I would suggest is that, and, and I don't want to, I don't want to get into scorekeeping. What I would suggest is that we send the letter out. We ask for a specific donation within a specific time period. Would, you know, it's, it's a holiday month um that involves food. And so I would suggest we get a letter out, we ask for a specific amount. And the per person, um that they uh have a deadline to make that contribution and that they simply put Nax Head Challenge on the. Naxhead Challenge on the memo line of their contribution, and that go to the food pantry directly, rather than sort of put it in a position where the town has to collect the money. We make the challenge, try to get the money quick, as quickly as we can directly to the The food pantry does use a service that you can contribute online. That service collects ten percent of the contribution, it's pretty significant. At least that's, that's the one my wife found, and so we are writing a check just so that all of the money gets to the, to the food pantry.
Sounds good, I like it.
I'm just thinking in my head different.
Okay, yeah, I know, it's a, it's a, it's an, it's an, and obviously, if this is not resolved by the time we get back here next month, it will be profoundly disappointing, and we will have a better sense of the need, and I think so in the short term, I think, you know, we sort of get our electeds to put their money where their mouth is, and then we follow up with a greater consideration if this thing is still dragging on. Okay, all right.
I mean, we could also encourage, kind of do a campaign and encourage people to donate directly to those organizations.
I think so, I, I am.
Community drive.
Like a community, so what comes to mind for me, and we've done this, and also a little sensitive to precedents, like we, we do the annual resolution for the diaper need in the community, but we don't give them any money. But we do a resolution that says that we do, and we recognize the need, and we encourage the giving. This is a little bit different circumstance, but I am concerned a little bit about, okay, well, what is the, what is the town's policy about what we give to and when and how much and all that kind of thing, because we have room at the end, and we have, you know, the folks who come to us every year for the Toys for Tots and talk about, or the motorcycle run, you know, and, and so I just, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna open a situation, I don't wanna create something that's open-ended, I don't wanna put us in a, in a bind where we haven't developed a policy. I do want us to do something immediately that addresses the issue for the holidays, and then let's see how things are going, and then let's give it some, some deeper consideration. So that, that's all I'm saying. And I, I think to encourage, to have a drop-off, which I think we could probably create pretty easily, let people know it's here, and then, and then this other effort that I'm talking about to raise some funds, and then, and then we go from there.
Maybe between now and the next meeting, the town staff can work on different ideas to kind of flesh out.
Yeah, can do that. And how that actually gets set up, and if we do it for more than a short term, how is it maintained, and, you know, who picks it up and when, and where does it sit, and what kind of container is and all that? I mean, there's a lot to be thought, I mean, thought about in that, so that it's a, it's done as well as Naxhead does everything else. I just, I want us to think about it and do it right.
This would be a question for this board, and for the future board. If the commissioners were agreeable to say, I remember during COVID, the commissioners in the planning board, I remember, offered to donate their salary or their stipend, would the board be amenable to thinking about maybe the town matching that donation that the commissioners do?
I would, I think that's a possibility.
Because that could.
It's the same taxpayer money, he just said he didn't want it to spend.
But it's not as much, but it's putting.
Well, the other thing I thought about was, was also giving the employees an opportunity also to match. So, let's take it a step at a time. I don't, I don't wanna, yeah, again, if it's going on a month from now, we will not have completely lost the opportunity to do something more significant. Is there other business to come for the board before we go into closed session, so that we can let folks go? All right, if there is not, then I move that the board go into closed session to consider a personnel matter pursuant to 143-318.11A6, and to consult with the town attorney regarding matters protected by attorney-client privilege, and to preserve that privilege to include the Cherry Incorporated litigation pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3. So moved, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, the board will be in closed session.
All right. Board has returned to open session. Mr. Leidy, will you report?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the board did discuss a personnel matter with the -- that's a confidential personnel matter and gave instructions to the town attorney regarding the litigation matter, but no other actions were taken.
Okay. All right. We addressed other business before we went to closed session, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Still moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second with thanks for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. It's been a pleasure.
And we're adjourned.